Do you have any joke tonight?
They come from practice.
Hey, everyone. Welcome to tonight, Monday, the September 19th, 2022 council meeting. We will first need a, I'll accept a motion to seal the minutes.
You got our motion to seal the minutes from the first item for the non-public and to not seal the minutes for the second item for the non-public.
Second? All in favor? Oh, hold on, we got Zoom, so we will, we will have a roll call vote. Kelly, when you're ready, please call the roll.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Taber?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCackren?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Can we now please have the roll call?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor McCackren?
Here.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Here.
Counselor Taber?
Here.
Counselor Denton?
Here.
Counselor Moreau?
Here.
Counselor Bagley?
Here.
Counselor Lombardi?
He's on mute.
He is with us. Counselor Blaylock?
Here.
Counselor Cook?
Here.
Thank you, Kelly. I would like to take a minute to remember Peter Ronkey. He was a member of the DPW. He served 35 years at the city of Portsmouth. He lost his life along with Gavin Swordge Jr. and Sean Kasnick. Our hearts go out to their family, and I would like to state that there is a celebration of life currently scheduled for October 17th. Please bow your heads for a moment. Now, if you join me in the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a proclamation that I will read on childhood cancer awareness weekend. Whereas cancer is the leading cause of death by disease for American children under the age of 15, with approximately 400,000 children and adolescents, one every 30 seconds diagnosed with cancer each year, and whereas Childhood Cancer Awareness Month was created in 1999 as a time to celebrate advances in childhood cancer treatment and survivorship care, remember the children we've lost and engage new advocates to join in the mission of achieving a day when every child diagnosed with cancer can live a long and healthy life. And whereas the Presidents of the United States took the opportunity of National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month 2022 to reinvigorate the 2016 Cancer Moonshot Initiative to cut the cancer death rate by at least half over the next 25 years and created the first Advanced Research Project Agency for Health with the single purpose of expediting breakthroughs in the prevention, detection, and treatment of deadly diseases. And whereas such local champions of childhood cancer awareness, a 16-year-old Rye resident, Amy Kinstead, and her Go Gold campaign in the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services online New Hampshire Health Wisdom System strive to keep the Seacoast community informed of the latest cancer research and treatment options and encourage education on exposure risk, prevention, and early detection is the strongest tools we have in the war chest of cancer. Now, therefore, I, Daglen McCackren, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, on behalf of the members of the City Council and the citizens of Portsmouth urge the community to pause and remember the children we have lost to this terrible disease and work to support the efforts to find new therapies to treat and defeat pediatric cancer so children not only survive cancer but thrive, to hereby proclaim September in Portsmouth as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, given with my hand and the seal of the City of Portsmouth on this 19th day of September 2022. Thank you. Next up, there are no acceptance of minutes, but so we're going on to recognitions and volunteer committee reports. First, we have with us tonight Camilla Sacco, 2022, Miss New Hampshire, or Miss New Hampshire USA. Is she with us tonight? She is. She's the one wearing the crown and the sash. We just wanted to take a moment. A Portsmouth president going on to compete. We want to wish you all the best and look forward to competing well and representing the city of Portsmouth well, as well, along with New Hampshire. We're so excited and, and thank you so much for, for coming here tonight. Once again, Miss New Hampshire USA. Next is, you know, this guy, it's no surprise because the agenda's printed. I wish it was kind of a surprise, so Tom Kozakowski would be surprised by this, but he was named last week the Athletic Director of the Year. He is, he's an amazing human being. There's not a game that, that I don't see. I try to get to, get to some. It's tough sometimes with two young kids, but he's at every one. I think he's going over to middle school right after this for, for volleyball. There's not a time that he comes in that he doesn't know every kid's name, knows a little story about them when he's presenting championships. And by the way, we've grown our championship titles under his tutelage here, and it's just a, it's a great, it's a great day to be able to, to recognize cause for this. So I have with me a challenge coin with our, our logo on. I would love to, to give that to you, cause, and, and carry it with you and hope it brings you good luck. We are so proud of this achievement and, but more proud of all the work that you do every day on, on behalf of our kids.
Thank you, guys.
Next up, I would like to take a moment to recognize Hispanic Heritage Month, and in doing so, I'd like to call out an event that we will be, well, not a city-sponsored event, but BIPOC Fest this September, the 25th, a great opportunity to learn about all cultures, but especially important in this Hispanic Heritage Month. And I would ask the Assistant Mayor, would you like to add anything to that?
Yes, the New England BIPOC Fest was founded by myself, Evan Mallett of the Black Trumpet, and Dave Vargas of Vida Cantina. We have over 40 organizations and restaurants spanning throughout all of New England of all different cultures coming with, to represent their food, their, their indigenous dances and representation, and just shows how diverse and how amazing New England is. Last year, we had 750 people, and we were able to donate almost $10,000 back into nonprofits that target different communities. This year, we're hoping to have over 1,000 people and to donate almost $15,000 back. So if you are around September 25th, please come down to Vida Cantina on Lafayette Road, the other side of Portsmouth. We have a great turnout of live music and so many things, and so I, I hope that we can all support and learn more about our neighbors.
All right. Thank you.
I would move to suspend the rules to bring up item 14-1 under the mayor's name, under your name.
Second.
Thank you.
And unfortunately, we need another roll call vote here. So Kelly, if you could call the roll.
Yes, Mayor. Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Taber?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCackren?
Yes. So this is a, a city facilities update. Now, when the legal department came to me with this request, I was, I was, I was emotionally struck. I think it's a fantastic idea. And I thought to myself, you know, how the hell are we going to keep it a secret all the way to the meeting? And then I realized, you know, it's the easiest thing in the world to keep these secrets from, from, from Bob here, but we have a, we've decided to, maybe there's a call in here. We've decided to, we've decided to rename the Pierce Island Boat Launch to the, I'm trying to think, the Robert P. Sullivan. I should show that, and this is, will be a wood sign eventually, but the Robert P. Sullivan Boat Launch in honor of your 40 years with the city. And I just, I want to thank you so much for the, the work that you've done, and I think this is twofold. One, I, I think you've earned it. But two, the responsibility that comes along with this is more people are going to know that, that you like boating, and two, have a boat, and then three, might be a little upset that you have not invited them on your boat. This is more of a stake in the ground to say, yes, you're going to have to invite all of us onto your boat because you got a boat launch named after you for how much you love boating. Thank you, Bob, for all the work, and we want to make sure people stuck around here.
You know, Your Honor, I had some thought that maybe somebody would name something after me. And as I was approaching City Hall these last couple of weeks, I noticed something that had never been out there in the past, which is two porta-potties located against the. Now that I see it's the boat launch, hey, I am, I am really humbled by it. I, I do have a little bit of a question about whether or not the rationale behind naming that boat launch after me is, is, as you said, or whether it might be recognition of all the amusement value that I provided to the citizens of the city trying to land at that boat launch mid-tide. When the boat bounces off the float and, and I nearly drown myself. So anyway. I would like to say this to the councilors, past and, and present. What you do every day for the citizens of the city is remarkable and by and large unheralded. And in fact, not only do you not get heralded, you routinely get attacked for various things that you do. But the, the city couldn't operate for a single day without guidance that's provided by the City Council. Just think about the budget alone. Look at the time and effort and stress and strain that you've put into adopting a budget. Without a budget, the whole operation grinds to a halt. Nobody does anything. So every time somebody turns on their faucet and gets water, has their trash picked up in the morning, has the roads plowed of snow in the winter, have the police department come when they need police assistance, have the fire department available to them, God forbid, they should need the fire department. Want to go to the library and get a book? Want to go to the pool in the summer and take a swim? Want to take a walk around Prescott Park? Want to use that lovely boat launch? And on, and on, and on, and on. None of this stuff happens without city councilors, past and present, being willing to come in here as often as you do in the course of a year. And I don't know, the, the citizens even know this, but you know, you're all volunteers, effectively volunteers, and your predecessors were. And it is volunteer citizens over all these years that have made all these wonderful things happen, that have turned the city into the crown jewel of northern New England. I was going to say, just look at the number of people that are moving here every day from various places, but you don't even have to wait to that. You just go out to Maplewood Avenue any night around 5:00 and see all the cars streaming into Portsmouth, having come from some other place that they left. You know, this is the city where people want to be. It's because of what you and your predecessors have done. It is a battle every single day for you. I know that. I've observed some of these battles. I've observed hundreds of these battles. Sometimes I have to be a referee in these battles. I've watched it all, and I've been part of a great deal of it. I have sat here at this table with you and the councilors before you, you know, people who belong in the history of the city, just to pick a few who aren't with us anymore. Evelyn Marconi, God love Evelyn Marconi, she would have cut the heart out of her beating chest and held it up to do anything at all to help the city of Portsmouth as she saw it. Eileen Foley, Eileen Foley is in heaven right this second, if there's any justice in the world. John McMaster, a particular favorite of mine, I hope he's in heaven too, but he's not as sure or better than Eileen Foley. So I know, you know, you, you fight the battle all the time. God bless you. And, and I have been at this table with you and those before you for 40 years. And my predominant feeling right this second is that I feel a little guilty because I've always tried to help you all these years, and, and now you're going to go on and you're going to go on and fight those battles without me. And, and it makes me feel like I'm abandoning you when I should be trying to help you. And it's just time caught up with me. Other than that, I wouldn't be here. I'd stay here. I'd stay here until they had to take me out. But it couldn't be. But I want to thank you, thank your predecessors, thank the employees of the city who help us all out every day and with whom I've become so close with so many. And then, you know, the citizens of the city who, you know, elected you, paid my salary, did all those important things that have led through our cooperative efforts to this city becoming just as fine a place to be as I think anybody could imagine. It just, I'm sad. The, the thing that brought me the most pleasure in my life was doing this job. It's over. It's over tonight. So I'm kind of emotional about it, and it's not a happy emotion, but the city will go on. Life will go on. I will go on. But until I don't go on any longer, the most important thing in my life will always be to have served you for these many years, and I thank you so much for having let me do it.
Well, Bob, that, that really was, was beautiful. A man recently told me a story about a couple of horses. I feel like you will, you will be here when we need you and look forward to that. And I first have to have a legal inquiry. We need to, as I understand, suspend the rule 44 and move to pass, or move to name the Pierce Island Boat Launch, the Pierce Island Robert P. Sullivan Boat Launch. Is that, is that the correct?
Yes, Your Honor, it would require a suspension of the rules.
We suspended the rules, so, so moved for the motion.
Well, we did suspend, we did suspend the rules completely. So, Bob, does that count?
It does count, Your Honor.
All right.
So, so moved.
Second?
All in favor? Oh, we need a roll call vote. Takes away from the, the majesty of the event here, but we will have a roll call vote to rename the Pierce Island Boat Launch the, the Pierce Island Robert P. Sullivan Boat Launch.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Taber?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCackren?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Your Honor. Your Honor, can we suspend the rules again so that we might bring up item 17, City Manager's Info Items, item number five, response regarding unexpected, unexpected bond proceeds?
Sure. Do we need the rules suspended again? I guess we do. All in favor or roll call vote on suspending the rules?
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Taber?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley, Blaylock, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCackren?
Yes.
And I just wanted to bring this up, Your Honor. I think Attorney Sullivan kind of explained it pretty well during his soliloquy about how important the budget is to the city. And there is a, a document in the packet tonight that in-depth details, explains logistics of how the bonding of the city works and how the $125 million number is really utilized. And I, I thought it was important to bring it forward at this part of the meeting, just so that more people would be able to see it.
Thank you, Counselor Bagley. Again, I would agree. Finance is always tricky. Understanding the bonds is something that is, the councilors, there's a learning curve, and as citizens, it's worth the read to be able to understand how we were able to finance. and as citizens, it's worth the read to be able to understand how we are able to finance what we do and why we do so in a way that has delivered us the AAA rating that we've had for the number...
11 years?
11 years. Okay. Next up, we have a public hearings and vote, oh no, we have public comment. All right, public comment. All right. Then, let's see. Okay, we will, how many folks? We'll start with former Mayor Rick Beckstead on the topic of friendly reminder.
Good evening, Rick Beckstead, 1395 Islington Street. I do have a friendly reminder, but I just wanted to take a minute to thank Bob for my nine years of civic duty, being involved. I learned a lot from you, do's and don'ts. We don't always agree, but we always respected each other. You know, you've been 40 years. I moved here 40 years ago, so I didn't know who the hell you were 40 years ago. And just as a check note, John McMaster definitely is in heaven. So my reminder, I was glad to see that the city is finally, two years in delay, going to be receiving Lot Two over by the Founding Place Garage. And I encourage the council to be able to go forward with that and have the city manager finalize it. Two years ago, we were supposed to have it when the deal went done, and things happened, right, Bob? So we're here today to be able to do that. I want the friendly reminder, and Councillor Monroe is going to be familiar with it, only being the fact that we've got a lot of things that are going on there. You still have two lots that we're not really sure of what's going on on Three and Six. Four and Five have been sold. It was a promise from the gentleman that actually still has some ownership, I believe, of those. And that promise was on Lot Six, there were two duplexes that were there, and those two duplexes were affordable housing. Again, existing stock can be affordable. Building new cannot. So they had made a promise to create five workforce housing. It was supposed to be on Lot Five. I've been a little reluctant whether I would actually go and ask this new owner to be able to do it. I'm still a little geared, maybe at the planning board level when it comes there. I may be asking that. But somebody made a promise. They looked in the camera, they looked at our boards, they were allowed to go and knock these two buildings down with the promise of building Five somewhere on these lots. And if it's Three and Five, if they still own them, or if they are, I would ask the council to please encourage whoever to fulfill that promise that was made, because we have two workforce buildings that actually could have housed four families, and they're gone now, and they'll never be returned. So it's up to you to be able to try and make at least the five that was promised come true. So thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Rick. Next up, we have Peter Weeks with the subject of the Worth Lot, also former mayor Peter Weeks.
Mayor McCackren, members of the council. Peter Weeks, PGW Real Estate Consulting. You have an item on your agenda tonight that I wrote to you on behalf of Worth Condominium Association, which the council in December of '21 referred it to the legal department for a report back. We now, September 13th, and the council has never received a report back. What I'm requesting in this letter, and I noticed that your sample motion is to refer it to the city manager, and I'm happy to meet with her. I've had numerous meetings with the legal department, the manager, the public works, parking director since January, and we haven't been able to come up with a satisfactory agreement. What I'm asking tonight is, at your October 24th meeting, if in fact, no resolution has been made, that it's satisfactory to both sides, that the Worth Development Association be allowed to make a presentation to the council at that meeting. And I hope you'll concur with that. Thank you very much. And Bob, good luck. I remember your first meeting.
I remember you.
Thank you, Peter. Next up is Mark Brighton with a topic of park names.
First off, Bob, thank you for your 40 years. I have always, always enjoyed talking with you. I respect you greatly, and as I said, I've always enjoyed talking with you. That being said, yeah, now time to go fishing. Mark Brighton, South Mill Street. Now, apparently, a request has been made to this council to name a park after Mark Stebbins. With all due respect to Mr. Stebbins and his family, that is one of the dumbest ideas to come down the pike in a long, long time. I would propose an alternative name for this park. I believe it should be called Brighton Park, not because of anything I have ever done, because the only moniker I've ever been able to hang on to is Jagfly. But rather, it should be for my father, Ray Brighton. He has contributed more to this city than Mr. Stebbins ever did or could even imagine of doing. If for no other reason, this park should be named or dedicated to my father, just for the two-volume tome he wrote, "They Came to Fish." Now, however, his name is on the building acquisition plaque, which is right out here in the lobby, and he was trustee of the trust funds, and there are other things that he did that have long since escaped my memory. After his family, my father loved this city. My mother could never, never had to worry about a mistress, because his mistress was this city. He spent decades researching this book. Yes, decades. And you want to know what he got for this effort? Nothing. Why did he do it? Simply for the love of this city. I know that in this age of rapacious development, it is hard to imagine simply doing anything just for the love of this city. On the other hand, Mr. Stebbins was amply rewarded. He made a lot of money here. Name this park after anyone you want. For God's sakes, you could name it after Bob Sullivan, but just not name it after Mr. Stebbins.
Thank you, Mark. Next up is Francis Cormier on the topic of Prescott Park.
This talk about building a seawall and lifting up the warehouse and all the money you want to spend to protect Prescott Park from the effects of global climate change. So first of all, the federal government with this Green New Deal is supposed to stop the ocean from rising. So if the Green New Deal is, it works, then why do you want to build a seawall and spend all this money protecting Prescott Park? Because the whole, the Green New Deal is to do away with fossil fuels and gas-operated automobiles and trade them in for electric roller skates to save the planet from global warming and the rising sea level. So why spend all this money protecting Prescott Park with a seawall when the Green New Deal is supposed to save us from this? So the federal government on one hand, and the city of Portsmouth on the other hand, you can't both be right. Someone's got to be wrong. So if the federal government is right, and they're going to stop the ocean from rising, we don't have to spend any money building a seawall. But if the federal government is wrong, and we're right, then the federal government, the Green New Deal, is taking us for a ride with electric everything and outlawing fossil fuels and all that. So they can't both be right. You can't both be right. So here, and the possibility is, you could both be wrong, and it's easy to find out. Remember when they launched the Thresher back in the 1960s? All the people were on Pierce Island taking pictures, and I went and dug one up out of my attic. And you can look at the Thresher coming out of the shipways that's taken from Pierce Island, and you can see the high watermark where it is, because they launch at high tide. And today, you can go to Pierce Island with a pair of binoculars, and you can see the high watermark on the shipways on its foundation. There's a line there, a scar, which is caused by the ocean and the seaweed, and that's the line goes straight across the cement foundation of the shipways. That marks the high watermark, and it's very, oh, I'm done. So it's very easy to see how much the ocean has risen since 1962, when they launched the Thresher. And all you got to do is look at one of the pictures, and it's free. It won't cost X million, X million dollars to look and find out.
Thank you, Francis. Next up, Esther Kennedy on Skateboard Park. And I can't read the first skateboard park. Can we park in Skateboard Park?
Good evening, Esther Kennedy, 41 Pickering Ave. And Bob, I just want to say, you are not the worst driver off a press, off the boat launch, as someone who lives across it and has many enjoyment experiences watching it. I have seen you, yes, there's question there. However, you are not the worst by far. I wanted to kind of talk about naming of things in our city. I was taken a little bit back when I saw naming of a park. And I would encourage you all to really set up a committee, to really look at naming. We have a committee for streets, and I don't want to take away anything. Bob, I think he deserves the boat launch, but I really think we need to have a committee, and maybe the street committee, to really think and walk through naming of these parks, benches, things in our city. Because personally, I think that should be named for people that lived over there and had their houses stolen, basically our Italian population. I think of Evelyn Marconi, as Bob shared. She did a lot of years of city, she had her house taken during urban renewal, and maybe that's someplace we can thank those people that gave up. And Jim Splain, same thing, we've heard for years about his home is taken. And that little park, I think, would be perfect to make a name or dedication for all those people that lost their home. But that's just my opinion. The one I read in the agenda is someone else's opinion. And I think you should have a committee that sits down, and maybe use a street naming committee as a committee, and really start talking about naming of certain things that we all treasure in our city. So I would encourage you to do that before you move forward. Secondly, the skateboard park. I heard from people that attended the last skateboard meeting that there's some questions about it, which I find very upsetting, as you would guess. So I'm hoping that we can have an update about the skateboard park, especially in this time of mental health, in this time of kids trying to make a comeback, knowing that certain kids that might go to the skateboard park might not be necessarily the children that sit on the football, the basketball teams, go to those events, but have their skateboarding as their outlet. I was really taken back, and I would hate to think that we're slowing down because of a contractor. I would hope that we are moving forward, and we are moving forward with gusto, and we get the thing built like we all had promised, and I heard all of you say in recent council meetings. So I'd like to see an update from the council about the skateboard park, and maybe you can put beds to bed, some of the rumors that I've heard. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Esther. Next up, we have Alan So on Prescott Park Free Speech.
Can you hear me okay?
Loud and clear.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan, congratulations on 40 years of public service as Portsmouth attorney. It's quite an honor to do that.
And Alan, sorry, just your name and city residence.
Yeah, you can say Alan So, Portsmouth. Thank you. I just wanted to say, distinguished members of the council, I wanted to reread this. "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness," the Declaration of Independence. As you may know, William Whipple signed that, one of our 56 founders of our great nation. And I came before you today, in 20 years I haven't spoken in front of a city. I was the youngest elected official in my city when I grew up, a long time ago, in Dana Point, California, a small Harper town. It's actually a beautiful city, somewhat like Portsmouth, it reminds me of. But I haven't been before anyone in 20 years, and I have to say, I have sat for almost five months with Mark from the park, and I have sat there and watched. And I have, I'm a class of 2010 Pepperdine School of Law, I've taken advanced constitutional law under Ken Starr. I have seen people instigate and attack him for these five months. I have not seen him instigate a single time. I have not seen one instance of racism or anything along that sort. I'm a strong Christian, I believe we're all created equal, and I also believe in freedom of speech. I think it's part of the bedrock of our nation. And so with that, I did a little bit of more legal analysis to advance this. One thing to keep in mind in the future is the Reed case. I came across a pamphlet that the state of New Hampshire sent in 2015 that was telling cities, make sure you look at your regulations on free speech in free speech zones, because the Supreme Court moved from intermediate scrutiny to strict scrutiny, which then switches the burden. So as it sits, we have this 2013 final memorandum, and in there about a fixed signs and handheld signs. You no longer are free of the burden of proving these things of challenge. You must now show through strict scrutiny a narrowly tailored law with a compelling state interest for each, which most likely a pastoral use or quite a enjoyment of the park will not even get close to. There is also the issue of a content-neutral regulation whose aggregate effect then targets one party, which then moves it into content regulation. So Mark is pretty much the only person that's flying his flags every day in that park. And so new regulations, again, they give the appearance, prima facie, at first glance, that they will be targeting him if it's just restricting him. That was one other thing, and I think I wrote down one more thing here. Normally, a public park is a traditional public forum, and so they may have missed that in that original 2013 final memo. This is not really a designated area. It's a public forum, it's a traditional area of speech, is a public park, more like a school or a concert area, is more of a designated public forum. That's pretty much it. The memo also, just, sorry, one last thing, the boundary line where he sits in the park right now reflects 2013 final memorandum. So I just wanted to say that, thank you, and we're willing to talk to you and discuss these things. We're amicable. We like moving forward when we're in situations, so appreciate it.
Thank you, Alan. Next up is, I don't believe, Mark, so we list Portsmouth residents first. So I'm going to go through the Portsmouth resident list. Mark, you have listed under here as Elliot, so I'll come back to you. I'll also go back to Noel's of Kittery. We have next Irish Mike from Portsmouth. Would you mind just addressing with your name and city of residence?
I remember Mike, Mike Hearn, most people know me as Irish Mike, and also I sit with Mark sometimes, and they're stating they want to change laws, like I read in the paper today, they want to have a six-person committee, three of the council members and three of outside. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a fair vote, like you can't, one party can't vote on something they disagree with. It has to be, you have to pick members from either party, and so you'll have a fair vote. So just to pick a six-person vote to change ordinance in the park, which nobody's getting hurt down there, there's no obscenities. The only obscenities that you'll see down there are people that come by, they don't like, it's not they don't like Mark, they don't like the flags he's flying. So you can't really have a fierce six-person committee from one party. You have to pick neutral people to have a fair and biased vote.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Bob, for your 40 years of service. I ran, I walked by, I just got back from Ireland, I walked by a pub that Bob and I was over there, Boland's Pub. Bob is a famous, is an experienced fly fisherman, so he used to go fishing with Mr. Boland.
Thank you, Mike. Next up is Paige Trace on the topic of Portsmouth, et cetera. And Paige gets the award for best penmanship on...
Paige Trace, 27 Hancock Street. I'd like to thank Attorney Sullivan for the two years that I was on council. Thank you for your Thank you for your guidance. I'd also like to try and find some way to say the runs to Rhine's Deli always continue. We'll just have to figure another way of getting you the Rhine's Deli. That is a long-running back and forth. For all of you who haven't been to Rhine's Deli, please go, although it's a three-hour run to Connecticut. Yes. At the risk of—during our election, when we were unfortunately at one point called Trumpies, I am here to publicly say I am an independent. That means undecided. Means I choose the candidate for the candidate. I don't—I can cross party lines. Where this is all leading is that these gentlemen here, none of whom do I know personally, have a valid point. And I know that because long ago, I did some research, long before council, I did research on which sections of Prescott Park were devoted to different activities. And there very specifically is a section of Prescott Park that is devoted to freedom of speech. That does not mean that because these gentlemen happen to support past President Trump, that they should be turned down, shut off. They have every right to speak there as much as I might want to stand there tomorrow and go, praise the Lord, Attorney Sullivan now has a boat launch named after him. The point is that we are a great city, and there is absolutely no reason why we should not step up to the fore and allow these gentlemen to speak if they are doing it legally and not try and turn them off. Maybe we—for those who don't like it, they should stand there and peacefully represent the other side. But we are Portsmouth, and that percentage of the park is devoted on all of the maps, very specifically to freedom of speech. And I would ask you, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, to respect what they are trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Paige. Next up, we have Sue Stary on the Archive Committee.
Hi, Sue Stary. I live at—on Bright Street in Portsmouth. I want to show my support for the founding of a Blue Ribbon Archive Committee. People have forgotten that New Hampshire was one of the 13 colonies, and Portsmouth and its people played an important role in founding of this country. I have—I personally have an unbroken heritage line to the 1715 settlers of Gosport on the Isles of Shoals, and my lineage goes back to England. Numerous family members have lived in many of the houses that still stand in Southend from the 1700s. I mention these facts because I have had an extremely hard time during my 15 years of genealogy to research in the city of Portsmouth. And I'm not talking just about the city archives, everybody's archives here. Documents are scattered all over the region. Many are in storage miles away from Portsmouth. Now that I am co-chair of a cemetery committee, which requires research for grants and fundraising, I'm running into the same issues of where are the documents? There are historical documents currently sitting in boxes waiting to be catalogued at the library and at the antanam. This is a perfect time with the 400th celebration coming up next year to establish a committee to decide how to preserve our historic documents and items for our city, state, and America. And I too, though I have not known Bob Sullivan for 40 years, I've known him this past year, and he's really been a big help to me, and I wish him all the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Next up is Bruce Campbell on the topic of free speech.
Bruce Campbell here from Portsmouth. And I'm here because I heard that they were going to shut down the boys at Prescott Park from free speech. And I just wanted to say that I thought that we had the right to assemble peacefully and voice our concerns, or, you know, again, peacefully. And as far as I can see, they're not harming anybody or causing any problem. I think the free speech should be respected and allowed. That's pretty much it.
Thank you, Bruce.
I also don't think that C-Wall, that should be studied before they go forward with that, spending all kinds of money as a resident. I don't think they should just jump into that either, but that's for another topic, I guess.
Appreciate you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Bruce. Next up is Paula Skelly on the topic of free speech.
I'm Paula Skelly. I'm a Portsmouth resident. And I just want to support free speech in the park and support Mark. If we are to be a community of diversity and tolerance, we need to not only tolerate things that we don't agree with, but we need to tolerate diversity of thought. If someone is offended by Mark or his flags, they are also free to come to the park with their own flags and their own ideas and talk to whomever they wish to speak with. If the tides turn, then perhaps tomorrow, your free speech will be at risk and your ideas and your thoughts. So I think we should remember, as a society, we are starting to take offense so easily and so often. And people just need to toughen up. If we do not—we will lose our freedoms, and we will all be silenced in the long run. As a country, if we are divided, we will fall. So we should agree to at least follow our Bill of Rights and our First Amendment rights for freedom of speech. It's—freedom of speech was ratified in 1791, and I think that we should respect our First Amendment rights for freedom of speech for all of us, no matter what side of the political fence we fall on. Because today, it might lean one way, tomorrow it might lean the other way. And to protect all of us, we should protect Mark and his flags and his right to be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Next up, we're going to go—does Bill still have his hand up?
No.
No. He does not have his hand up. Okay, we will go—
He's got his hand up now.
He's got his hand up.
Go ahead, Bill.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Loud and clear.
Okay. First, I want to address the McIntyre. No surprise there. If we could kindly get some kind of update or timeframe—I know it was all outlined months ago, but we've hopefully all enjoyed some sun this summer and relaxation. But I know that there's some deadlines coming, and if the city manager or the mayor could post or update us, that would be greatly appreciated. Moving on to the park. I just wanted to say that I feel like this is getting way out of hand. Not all freedoms of expression are absolute. We know that. We're all taught that in elementary school. You can't yell fire in an auditorium. I was down there a couple Sundays ago and was taken back. Now, I know Mark. I like Mark. He's a good man, and he has the right to express himself. My concern is parks are designated areas for respite, for restoring our spirit. You cannot protest in national parks with the U.S. Forest Service, which I'm well acquainted with. My ask tonight is, is that you restrict access of those three locations, the park be eliminated. And I'm all in favor of protesting, but especially if we do have to allow Prescott Park. I mean, ordinance are man-made. They're not set in stone. They're not—the 10 commandments here. But on Sundays especially, if there can be consideration to not allow on Sundays, I would strongly recommend this. Now, I've read in the paper and heard that there's not enough law enforcement to enforce what I think are chronic violations of ordinances. Now, Mike Maloney walked me through it. I've read from the newspaper through Bob's quotes that everyone's obligated—or has the opportunity to have one sign, and one flag represents a sign and a chair. Now, as I was talking to Mark and his buddy there, we had a nice conversation for half an hour, there was unattended chairs with multiple flags. And I believe that's what's offensive to most of us, is that it's excessive, and it's—it doesn't follow the ordinance. And the argument that there's not enough law enforcement just doesn't cut it. Because Sunday night, when I came back into town around 6 o'clock by the shed, and there must have been six officers addressing one situation by the shed. So again, I think it's not an issue of free speech, and they were very civil, and we had a great discourse. However, again, a park's a special place. And if you could consider limiting the time there, and also, I think, and I insist, that we enforce the ordinances, that's not interpretive, that's black or white. I would very much appreciate that. So thank you for the consideration.
Thank you, Bill. Next up, we have going back through— Next up is James Knowles.
Yes, name's James Knowles. I live in Kittery. I never could afford to live in Portsmouth. I've been basically living in Kittery for basically 50 years. I've been using Portsmouth for a playground all that time.
Good to have you.
In 1970s, if you go back to then, the youth was getting beat up for standing on soapboxes, arguing against the establishment. Known as freedom of speech. Well, as time's gone on, our freedoms have actually been increased throughout the years. And then to hear now, or someone sitting there, oh, we want to limit this now. This has been going on for, I know, for 50 years, you know? People have the right for speech. If anything, we should be looking at, make sure we don't hamper anything. That's all, you know, I look at, and I appreciate the opportunity to listen and hear different people speak in the park. I have throughout the years. Thank you.
Appreciate you, James. Crossing the bridge. And next up, we have Mark Brenner from Elliot.
Good evening, council. Good evening, city manager, city clerk, and congratulations, Bob. All right. So I'm Mark at the park. I'm the guy that's causing all the trouble, apparently. And I've been over there for two years now. I was asked to move the first time to the designated area, which I did. And I've been there since, in the public forum area of Prescott Park. Some people thought I was there to instigate. I've heard that many times, but that's not why I was there, or why I'm there. The truth is that I love my country and its people, and I feel our freedoms are being taken away from us right in front of our eyes. Yes, I'm here every day, and people find that kind of odd. But I'm committed. I'm committed to holding our way of life as free people. My dad fought in World War II. He went in at 16 and a half. He went to the Army Air, became a pilot. At 19 years old, he was flying B-24s stationed in England doing secret missions, the night missions, over to Scandinavia when the Nazis were there. So, you know, I never served. I'm serving now. This is my service right now. Let's see, what else are we going to talk about? Well, I'm proud to be in America, and America has given me all the freedoms that no other country could have given me. I've had three careers here. I've traveled. I've been through the United States. Been held through Europe twice. Been to some of the islands, some of the countries in the islands, Third World countries. I've seen a lot. And there's no place like America. And let's see, what else we got? So I started out as a corporate internal auditor where I traveled the country. Used to wear three-piece suits, little bow tie. And I did that for three years. And I just couldn't take the four walls. Even though I was traveling, I couldn't take those four walls. So I had to find something else to do. And corporate just wasn't for me. So I decided to come to Portsmouth. I looked up and down the coast, and Portsmouth was the place. And I opened up a nice little women's leather shoe store. Finest leather shoes they ever saw. And also, I had handbags, jewelry, you name it. And I had that for four years. Also bought a building in town. And now, here we are. I'm in another business, and I've been doing this now for 42 years. That's it, huh?
It's three minutes for everyone.
Jeez, okay. Anyway, as my southern friends say, you all have a blessed evening. I had a lot more to tell you and say, but I guess we're not going to get there.
Thank you, Mark.
Yep.
Next up is Philomena Knowles from Kittery.
Philomena Knowles from Kittery. And so I'm not a Portsmouth resident, but I felt compelled to come here tonight to talk to you about my support of the group in the park with their Trump flags. I'm in the park daily. I walk through, and I've seen the group almost every day, sitting in the designated area in the park. And they don't block anyone, they don't harangue anyone, and they certainly don't prevent people from enjoying the park. The only—in my observation, the only people that are not following the rules are the dog walkers who go right by the signs that says—that say, "No dogs all season." They don't seem to think it applies to them. But other than that, everything's peaceful in the park. And I think the council realizes that any restrictions on such a peaceful group in the park would be a violation of their First Amendment right. And that's basically what the attorney, Bob Sullivan, said. You can't try to appease Trump haters by restricting pro-Trump people who are just trying to, you know, tell people what they feel. And I know that the town council will realize that in order to have diversity, equity, and inclusion, you have to listen to all voices. And I'm sure they're going to continue to have, you know, public discussion in the park. Thank you.
Thank you, Philomena. That is it for public comment. We have no hands. Next up is the first reading of ordinance, amending Chapter 10, Article 5A, Section 10.5A 21B, amend map for building height standards, incentive overweight district sections 10.5A 212.20, building height standards, sections 10.5A 21.21, and 10.5A 21.22, Section 10.5A 43.32, building and story heights, Section 10.1530, terms of general applicability. Sample motion. I'd wait on move to pass first reading and schedule a public hearing and second reading at the October 3, 2022 city council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Your Honor, if I could just make a clarifying point, that the map in your— Your honor, if I could just make a clarifying point, that the map in your packet depicts the civic districts, and the planning board recommended a removal of those districts. So we will update the map before the time of the public hearing. Just wanted to make sure that's clear to everyone. Thank you.
And question for city manager, Councilor Moreau. The civic districts are those buildings such as churches, civic...
Churches, nonprofits.
That have been...
Significant.
So far, the building heights have not applied to them.
Correct. Previously, since we moved to character districts, nothing has applied to them, as far as character standards or heights or anything.
All right. And we will require a roll call vote.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Taber?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCacken?
Yes.
You know.
Second is, again, we tabled this from the last meeting, the second reading of ordinance amending Chapter 1, Article 4, Section 1.414, Commissions and Authorities. A sample motion move that Chapter 1, Article 4, Section 1.414, the ordinances of the city be amended as described in the memorandum from the city attorney to the city manager on that topic dated September 13, 2022.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Counselor Moreau.
I think that what was put together really does encompass all of the discussion that we had last meeting regarding that ordinance. And I feel like moving forward, it's probably the best way to move forward and keep the audit committee as true and honest as we can.
Any other questions, comments? I'll speak on this. The... We've spent an enormous amount of time on the audit committee. And we've done so because, as Bob eloquently stated earlier tonight, there's a lot of citizens that only experience government twice a year, and that's when they have the tax bill sent out. The finances and how we deliver those to the city are of utmost importance. I believe that it is our responsibility, and that's why I support adding a counselor to that, to require, to be a part of that audit committee. But I do sincerely appreciate the effort of citizens that have spent their time and delivered their expertise to those on the council that do not have the financial background or expertise, and lend that to us to be able to make recommendations to the broader council. So with that, I will call for a roll call vote.
I'm sorry, mayor, there's a council with their hand up.
Oh, sorry.
I believe it's Counselor Cook.
Counselor Cook. We do not have a public hearing. That was closed at the last meeting.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, mayor. I agree that the changes encompass our discussion that we had at our last meeting, following comments during the public hearing section. The one thing that isn't captured in this ordinance, and it can't be captured in the ordinance, is this concern that we hear from residents around our auditing firm, and how long we've had a relationship with the same auditing firm. I think it's really important that we do address that concern, because honestly, I think, and I don't know this for certain, I haven't done a poll of the council or anything like that, but I suspect that most members of the council share that concern about having, making sure that we have a change in our auditing firm on a regular basis, just to make sure that we are very transparent, and that we have different firms looking at our books. So that's something that I think that the Governance Committee could look at separately, aside from the ordinance, is potentially a policy on the part of the city council to look at change in the auditing firm every so many number of years, say, seven years or 10 years. And I think that that's something that we should do, given concerns of our residents, and I think concerns that the council probably shares as well.
Thank you, Counselor Cook. Any other questions or comments? I'll have a roll call vote.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Taber?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
No.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCacken?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to one.
Next on to the city manager. City managers items which require action.
Thank you, mayor. Tonight, you'll recall, we are bringing back the request to adopt or approve the welfare guidelines. We're joined tonight by welfare officer Ellen Tully. Thanks for being here, Ellen. This is a reminder that we are taking up the revised welfare guidelines attached for your consideration in the packet. And they were helped, they were assisted by an effort last year by the New Hampshire Local Welfare Administrator Board of Directors, along with attorneys from the New Hampshire Municipal Association. So what the model guidelines do is provide a template for cities and towns to use as their own, or to modify them as they see fit. And Ellen is here to answer any questions you may have about the changes that were either added or memorialized. And I'll give an answer to Counselor Bagley's question about pet food. Pet food was never something we allowed, but it's something we memorialized in the guidelines now, if that's correct, Ellen.
Well, and pet food has not been allowed in the past. The intent of the law that was written over 200 years ago is to maintain human beings, to keep them clothed, fed, sheltered, basically. And if you start considering things like pet food, the variations on that are infinite. As you can well imagine, what kinds of pets people have, what size the pets are, how much it's going to cost to keep a pet, and whether or not even they're supposed to have a pet where they live. The variations are infinite, and I can't foresee any kind of a formulary that we'd be able to put that in somebody's budget. With that being said, however, if I have a client who has an ADA-approved service animal, which would be a dog or a miniature horse, we would absolutely consider the cost of maintaining the pet in that particular home.
Counselor Bagley?
Thank you for the explanation. And a question for the city attorney. It sounds like we didn't allow pet food before, even though it wasn't disallowed by the ordinance. If we go forward with this change and disallow it by the ordinance, how is it then possible to allow it for ADA purposes?
It would be, in that situation, what you would have is a conflict between city ordinance and the American Disability Act. In that conflict situation between that federal law and the local city welfare guidelines, the federal law would predominate.
Okay, thank you.
And if I might add, Ellen would use discretion in that case.
Absolutely. There is, these are guidelines. These are not hard and fast rules. They're guidelines that are meant to define and explain the rights and responsibilities of the welfare officer, and also the rights and responsibilities of the client, whoever that person may be. And our intention is to memorialize these policies in an easy-to-understand format that I can give to my client, that I can give to their advocate, and that I can have for my own information.
Is there a follow-up?
There's a follow-up. And I guess, I'm still not comfortable with this particular change. And I understand the intricacies of this. And when I think of a pet, I'm thinking of what we standardly think of as pets, primarily dogs and cats. I think that, you know, somebody that's in a situation where they need assistance, if they have a pet, in today's day and age, that's going to be a strong emotional bond, that's going to help them get back on their feet, what they're likely to do is then feed that pet human food, which is at a higher cost, and cuts into their budget more. So I think with this change, we're maybe not solving the situation. I think we're possibly making it worse.
There are many organizations and programs that are available to people who are experiencing homelessness, or some kind of straitened circumstances financially. And we always provide information and referral to our clients on many subjects, and this subject of the pets is one of them. And it has come up once in my 20-plus years, that someone had to put their pet down. And we were able to refer that person to another charitable organization who bore the cost.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Counselor Taber?
Yeah, I will vote for the changes as they've been drafted. And I think chiefly, for my vote, it's deferring to the years of experience of the staff in dealing with these cases, which I respect. And I think, not just our staff, but these are statewide guidelines that have come through many, many, many thousands of cases.
Yeah. The New Hampshire Municipal Association has worked hand-in-hand with the New Hampshire Local Welfare Administrators Association to update guidelines. If there are any necessary legislative changes, then we include those, and that has happened in the past. And we just kind of want to make things very clear to everyone who needs to look at the guidelines. And every city has their own guidelines. They can, you know, detail them as they see fit.
Thank you, Ellen. It is a, it's a hard job, and we thank you.
Thank you. But before you thank me, I want to make one change that didn't appear.
Ooh.
Yeah, I know. In the very recent past, I was talking to, talking with my peers around the state, and we have traditionally paid $750 to the local funeral homes who work with us to bear the cost of cremation. And that is currently more than a 50% cut in what they charge. And I would like to increase that to $1,000 per visit. And that's a pretty common figure around the state. And that's on page 26 of the guidelines.
I'll await a sample motion to increase from $750 to $1,000 for cremation services.
So moved.
Second, your honor.
We will need a roll call vote.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Taber?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
No.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCacken?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to one.
And we'll vote on the amended motion. But now that, I believe I can thank you, Ellen, I would like to do so. This is, it's incredibly difficult work that you do. And I believe clarity is important in that work, both for you delivering what we can do, and directing to where we can, but also for the recipient to very clearly understand what the city of Portsmouth can do when a life change necessitates, or a change of circumstance necessitates the help offered here. Clarity is something that I believe is undervalued in trying to get to the other side. And I appreciate that you have noted that these are guidelines. And I've always been impressed how effectively, and without fair and fair, you do your job on behalf of so many in need in Portsmouth. And that was very clear to me during the pandemic. And having more people reach out, it was truly remarkable. I haven't thanked you publicly, and I will take this time to do so, that you've come out to City Hall for this, and very much appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
A roll call vote on the...
We need a motion.
Oh, sorry. A motion to pass the, I await a motion to pass the approval of welfare guidelines as amended.
So moved. Second.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Taber?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
No.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCacken?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to one.
Next up, your honor, is a request for a temporary construction license located at 64 Vaughn Street. This is relating to the renovation of the building and construction of an addition for property located at 64 Vaughn Street. And on February of this year, the council granted a license for this project for the use of 35 square feet of sitting property in the Vaughn Mall, along with 14 parking spaces in the Worth Lot. And through the owner, Nova Cure's agent, Hampshire Development Corp., and Representative Shane Forsley is here tonight, they are now requesting a second license to use 650 square feet of the alley abutting the property and connecting Hanover Street to the Worth Lot, to set a crane for 104 days from September 20, which would be tomorrow, through January 1, along with 10 parking spaces in the Worth Lot, to create a safe work area for steel erection facade and roof installation for 93 days. So the total license fee for the use of both spaces would total $35,930. And legal and planning have both reviewed and approved the form of the attached license.
So first off, let's, I'll await the sample motion. Move that the city manager be authorized to execute and accept the temporary construction license to encumber 650 square feet of the alley that abuts the property and connects Hanover Street to the Worth Lot for a term of 104 days, and for the use of 10 parking spaces in the Worth Lot for a term of 93 days, as requested.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Counselor Bagley?
I guess, you know, these come before the council, and they're always difficult for the citizens, because, you know, sidewalk access or parking access is blocked off. But I think with this project, there were some bricks that fell down unintentionally. And it's important that we have these safety buffer zones. One, so that the workers can do their work safely. And two, if something is to happen that, you know, isn't anticipated, it's not falling on people. So as much of an inconvenience as these sorts of things are to the people of the city, I think it's important that we pass them.
Agreed. Is there any other questions? None. On the, I guess I have one. So connects Hanover Street to the Worth Lot. We're talking about that alleyway that went past 25 Maplewood?
Yes, that's correct. It connects Hanover Street to the Worth Lot, and between the recently constructed 25 Maplewood building and where we're working now at Cabot House.
Change, just for the record, will you state your name and your affiliation?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Shane Forsley with Hampshire Development on behalf of Nova Cure.
Thanks.
And a question, is that area currently blocked off? Will this prevent any traffic going through that, or is it currently blocked off?
So at the moment, there is through traffic allowed. And through this license agreement, we would temporarily stop any through traffic into the alley with exception of the residents and bankers who are entering the private garage at 25 Maplewood.
Okay, so right there. But getting up to the parking lot, have to go down Hanover Street and hang a left on Maplewood, and get into the parking lot that way?
That's correct.
Okay. And the reason this is, this needs to happen is, the crane needs to be placed there in order to, I guess, effectively construct the structure, given the stability issues that were encountered in development?
Yes. So the crane needs roughly 25 by 25 feet in the alleyway to set up. That's got a safety factor accounted for in that. It needs to sit there in order to erect the structural steel to build the building. And then the facade, the building envelope, I call it, will follow suit.
Okay. And then, final question, at least from me. These things are, they're always better if we, if we under-promise and over-deliver.
Yes.
It's hard to predict the future, but do you think you've asked for an adequate amount of time for the license at this moment?
Yes. We have factored in a little extra time, in case we do run into snags or delays.
Okay. And have the adjacent property owners been made aware of this? Obviously, I guess 25... Obviously, I guess 25 Maplewood have, since they will receive access, the residents as well. On the other side, I guess, I don't know, the La Careta is probably not.
Yeah. Our other neighbor, La Careta 172 Hanover Street, has worked cooperatively with us throughout the process, and they're aware of the project that's underway.
Okay. So, you know, I think, I guess I would just say that these things, like, if we can get them so that the neighbors or the abutters have been forewarned and where there will be impacts, to agree to those impacts. And then to try to work so that we can, you know, Jane, it's nice of you to come out. You get to say goodbye to Bob Sullivan here tonight. But the, we'd love it if we could, and construction's hard, but we just want to be able to make sure that we are, we are setting the right expectation for the residents, both the abutters and people that will now reach out to us asking why this is, this is closed off, to give them the best answer that's possible, knowing there's a lot of factors. So appreciate the work that went into this, and I'll be supporting it.
Absolutely. Thank you. And thank you, Bob, for your service.
Thank you.
In the short time that I've developed a relationship with you, you've been a lot of help to us, so thank you.
All right. Kelly, could we please have a roll call vote?
Do we have a motion?
It did. I read that motion super fast. You weren't even able to keep up with that.
Goodness, you are so good. Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Tabor?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCackren?
Yes. Thank you, Shane.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Next up, Your Honor, is approval of the employment agreement with new fire chief William McQuillan. In conjunction with the fire commission here, represented tonight by Commissioner Gamester, we're looking support for the proposed employment agreement.
I will await a sample motion to approve the proposed agreement as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Well, Counselor Blaylock?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to say we're very excited to have Chief McQuillan lead our fire department. Sad to see Chief Tremaine go, but I have faith that, that, yeah, we're continuing in a positive direction, and we are very lucky to have Chief.
Thank you, Counselor Blaylock. I too, oh, Counselor Moreau?
I'd just also like to add, I've had the opportunity to work with Chief McQuillan on the Haven Board when I was back many years ago when I was on that. And he's really thoughtful, thinks through everything, and I think he's going to make a great fire chief.
Counselor Tabor? I just, I also wish him the best, and I was heartened that he's committed to continue residence in the City of Portsmouth. I think that's really important for our fire leadership to be on the scene as quickly as possible. So thanks for doing that.
Well, I would like to concur with everyone who said such great things about Chief McQuillan, not Bill, but Chief McQuillan now. And it's an honor to vote for this, and I want to thank certainly the chief, but also your wife Molly for lending you all of the time to the City of Portsmouth, and very much look forward to the job that you're going to do on behalf of our residents to keep our families safe. We thank you very much. So with that, please have a roll call vote.
If I can interrupt the roll call and just make a public announcement to welcome Assistant Fire Chief Jason Janey as well. I don't know if everyone's had a chance to meet Assistant Chief Janey, but congratulations to here as well.
It's his first official duty to stand here and focus the contract. All right.
Thanks, Mayor. Ready for the vote call?
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Tabor?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCackren?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Congrats, Bill.
Next up, Your Honor, is approval of school custodial supervisor union agreement. This was discussed with us in a previous non-public session by the city's labor negotiator, Tom Clausen. The proposed employment agreement is in your packet.
Any, oh, I'll await a sample motion to approve the proposed agreement as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Nope. I will be supporting this. If we could please have a roll call vote.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Tabor?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCackren?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Number five is a verbal item, and it's a request to schedule a work session to consider a stormwater utility feasibility. We are looking to establish Stormwater Utility Enterprise Fund similar to that already established for water and sewer. And we would propose a date of Monday, October 17th, looking ahead to the calendar in the month of October that isn't a holiday or a previously scheduled council meeting.
I will await a sample motion to schedule a work session October 17th, 2022, at 6:00 PM to present the preliminary findings and recommendations of this study and discuss steps the city may take to implement a Stormwater Utility Enterprise Fund.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Tabor? Do you have anything? Oh.
Oh, I just, so I moved it. I will speak to it if that's... Counselor Denton and I had a healthy discussion about this in the fee committee back in February. And I think that citizens may think, oh, here comes a new tax. Well, remember that our stormwater compliance with EPA regulations is a requirement we have to meet one way or the other. So the question is, how do we fund it as fairly as possible? Right now, half of it's funded through property tax. And that means the residents pay the lion's share of stormwater treatment expense in our budget. But who creates the most stormwater runoff? It's large commercial users. So I think we have an opportunity here, as the city manager's outlines in her memo, to have a more equitable way to fund stormwater remedies. We do have to do these remedies, and it's good that we do them because we're protecting the river in Great Bay and the mill ponds. And so I look forward to this. Our fee committee discussion really pointed us in the direction to do this, and we now will have some data.
Thank you, Counselor Tabor. I'd like to support this, and it's a, I was lucky enough to join the city manager, Brian Getz, as well as members of the EPA at PES, to discuss with Senator Shaheen and Andrea Miko, the importance of our working to get PFAS out of PES, but as this is going to be a model for the country as they're looking at some of the standards there. And what struck me the most is just the enormity of the problem, just countrywide, nationwide. The more water that we can incentivize people to divert from those systems, the better we're all going to be, and the more money that we will long run be able to save to tackle this problem. So I was excited by this when it started. I look forward to this, to the discussion, and I think that we will have more equity around homeowners and commercial property, and hopefully start to get the type of development that understands that and the costs associated with just giant parking lots with a ton of stormwater runoff. So with that, Kelly, would you please call a roll call vote?
Yes. Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Tabor?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCackren?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Last under city manager items would be a request for a deed acceptance between the city and Foundry Place LLC for property located at 88-99 Foundry Place and 0 Deer Street. In your packet, there is a memo outlining a request for two deeds. The first one is a warranty deed for Lot 2. The second is a community space easement deed for a future pedestrian sidewalk over 88 to 99 Foundry Place, otherwise known as Lot 6. And on behalf of the legal team, Assistant City Attorney Trevor McCourt is here to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you. Before I request a sample motion, just a legal inquiry for Bob, given that we are in active litigation, would you make the recommendation that we discuss any of this outside of recording a vote?
Your Honor, my recommendation would be that the council not discuss it.
Thank you, Bob. I now await a sample motion to authorize the city manager to accept and record a community space deed over 88-99 Foundry Place and a warranty deed for Lot 2 in substantial similar form to the deeds from Foundry Place LLC contained in the agenda packet.
So moved.
Second.
May we please have a roll call vote?
Yes, Mayor. Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Tabor?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCackren?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Next up, the consent agenda. Thank you, City Manager Cunnard. I await a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
It's raining hard. It's raining hard.
I guess it is raining hard. Kelly, will you please call the roll?
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Tabor?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Wow.
Yes? Okay. And Mayor McCackren?
Yes.
Unanimous.
I'm a little afraid of thunder, ladies, sorry.
Before we move off of that, I'd simply like to call out that Chris Kerriger and the Seacoast Paddleboard Club is requesting permission to hold the 5th Annual Halloween Costume Paddle on Sunday, October 30th, in case anybody is at home and loves to paddle and loves to dress up. This will be at the newly-named Robert P. Sullivan Pierce Island Boat Rave. So, Bob, I expect to see you there.
In costume.
Next up, presentations and written communications. Would wait for email correspondence. Await a motion to accept and place on file.
So moved.
Second.
Next up, the request to rename the North Mill Pond Park in honor of Mark Stevens. I'd await a sample motion to schedule a work session to consider the request.
Your Honor, do we need to vote on the previous one, or are we taking?
Oh, sorry, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
He's like moving on. We didn't vote.
Thunder shook us up.
Thunder. Thunderstruck. All right, Kelly, could we have a?
Pressure drop.
A roll call vote on the email correspondence?
Yes, Mayor. Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Tabor?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCackren?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Next up, I'd await a sample motion to schedule a work session to consider the request from renaming the North Mill Pond Park in honor of Mark Stevens.
So moved.
Second.
And for clarity at home, we suspended Rule 44 to not go through the process of naming anything for Robert P. Sullivan. And I think for the rest of the night, I'll report as Robert P. Sullivan. But we did that because we're able to do so, and we felt that, clear in a way, Bob deserved that honor. I think that this request would be good to have a discussion, and specifically for me to highlight some of the things that I got to know Mark doing while we went through COVID, and he served as appointed by former Mayor Beckstead to serve on that commission, the COVID Response Task Force. That said, we will have a discussion on that if this motion passes. So this is not to name the park, but to schedule a work session and a date future to have the discussion on that. Counselor Moreau?
Just for purposes of clarity, are we just going to discuss that one name, or we didn't discuss if other names are brought up? Because it seems like several people spoke about other people that might be worth talking about. So I guess I wanted to make sure we're clear. Are we just going to be considering one, or is there a possibility of others to be considered?
I think that we are the ones in charge, so we can, we can do that. I think the sample motion was to consider this request. In the vein of considering the request, I think if other names come up, that would be expected and natural. But it's to consider the request that's before us now.
I believe there's a hand raised?
There's a hand raised?
I think it's Counselor Cook.
Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I would also suggest it might be worthwhile for the council to have a discussion around the policy of naming various parks or buildings and how we move forward with that process in the future, because we could have lots and lots of requests to name individual buildings or parks after people in town. And I want to make sure that we have a clear guidelines that we're following when we're doing so.
Thank you, Counselor Cook. Counselor Tabor?
I agree with that, and I think it'd be great if our discussion at the work session could touch on criteria, you know, are we looking at service to the city, service above your self-interest, service given freely? And, you know, what are the criteria we use to bestow a name on a piece of public property?
Thank you, Counselor Tabor. Counselor Blaylock?
Thank you. This request has come before the rec department, before the rec board, I'm sorry. We've had some requests to name a field or a building after an individual that has contributed to the City of Portsmouth. And there is some, there are some guidelines that we refer to, and there's like, there's four different levels. They describe different levels of service. I think the highest level, you have to be deceased, and there's something like over 40 years of service or at least 20. But there are some, we were able to find some guidelines on file, and we used those criteria when we were asked the same question.
Thank you, Counselor Blaylock.
There's a wall of honor, and there's several other levels of acknowledgement.
I think that as a part of the work session, if we could include current practices the city employs and have been employed, I think that would prove fruitful per the discussion. So knowing that we have a motion on the floor to consider this request along with general practices as highlighted in the discussion, I would now ask Kelly to take the, take the roll call vote.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Tabor?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCackren?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Next up, a request for Paper Street for Joffrey Avenue. I'd await a sample motion to refer to the planning board and assess their report back.
So moved. Second?
Counselor Bagley is always pretty good at waiting to get the second, not vying for the first. Let's see, is there any discussion on this? No. Kelly, when you're ready, we'll take the roll on this.
Certainly. Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Taber?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counsel Lombardi?
Yes.
Counsel Blaylock?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCackren?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Next up, I'd wait a letter from Peter Weeks regarding the Worth Lot. I would await a sample motion to refer to the city manager for a report back.
So moved. Second?
Any discussion on this? Not at this time.
We have a hand up.
Oh, we do?
We have Counselor Cook's hand up.
Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's important that we consider Mr. Weeks' request that he made during public comment as part of this referral to the city manager for consideration.
And for clarity in the record, Mr. Weeks asked to have an opportunity to address the council. Is that what you're wanting to recognize?
Yes, Mayor. I'm just requesting that the city manager consider that request also when she's looking at this.
Counselor Taber?
Maybe we could get an update. This came before the last council. It involves a complicated and somewhat unclear chain of title to some parking spaces in the Worth Lot. And there were negotiations ongoing over that. Is there any update that we can get?
I'll start the short conversation to say we've had several meetings with Mr. Weeks on behalf of his client. It has involved several members of the legal department and members of the parking department and myself, and we've had several go rounds, and we have not been satisfied or found that any of their requests are worthy of council consideration at this time. I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that fills us in.
Okay. So we will refer to the city manager for the report back. I guess when we ask for a report back, would we expect something more than that, or we expect that, or a status of potentially where those requests are?
We are, we would be in a position to give you a clear sense of how we feel about their proposal, but I think it remains a question of the council whether you want to entertain a presentation by Mr. Weeks on behalf of his client. I see those as two separate asks, so we would be happy to provide the report back.
Okay. Let's see the report back, and we'll make a decision on whether or not a request, either work session or a presentation here, or, I guess not a work session, but a presentation here, or with this, I don't think this would be a non-public, so either, we'll see the report back and we'll decide whether or not we need to have a more in-depth conversation. So just voting on the report back, Kelly, could you please take the roll?
We need a motion.
Oh, do we not? Oh.
I didn't get it if somebody made it.
Assistant Mayor and Counsel Bagley.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Assistant Mayor, motion. Counsel Bagley, okay. Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Taber?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counsel Lombardi?
Yes.
Counsel Blaylock?
Yes.
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCackren?
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right. Now, we have under the council my name. Bob, did you think that that was clever, the city facilities update? I thought it was clever. So we have next up appointments to be voted, and I'm going to do these all, and I would await a motion to appoint Luis Rodriguez to the Cable Television and Communications Commission, Tori L. Brooks to the Sustainable Practice Blue Ribbon Committee, Patricia Bagley to the Trees and Public Greenery Committee, and Jeffrey Mattson as an alternate to the zoning board of adjustment. So moved.
Second?
Your Honor, is it okay for me to vote as Patricia Bagley is my aunt?
I would certainly. I mean, I would.
Your Honor, there's no prohibition against.
Unless you think that would bias you one way or the other.
I don't think there's anybody that loves trees more in the city than she does.
All right. Then I look forward to you voting. Any discussion? And was that, that was motioned and seconded? Great. All right, a roll call vote.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Taber?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counsel Lombardi?
Yes.
Counsel Blaylock?
Yes.
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCackren?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Assistant Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. First, on the agenda, I would bring forth a motion for the council to approve, let me just read the motion, to appoint the mayor or his designated to act as a delegate at the NHAM Legislative Policy Conference and more to accept and approve the NHMA's proposed legislative principles and the 2023 proposed legislative policy positions as recommended by the Legislative Subcommittee.
Second?
Thank you. The Legislative Subcommittee met recently to go over the New Hampshire Municipal Association's legislative policies going forward. There will be a conference, the mayor will vote on our behalf. We found that these, they were most of the policies in what you'll see in your packet, agree with the policies that this council adopted in February of 2022 of this year.
Thank you, Assistant Mayor. Any questions or comments? You on Zoom?
No.
We'll have a roll call vote.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Taber?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counsel Lombardi?
Yes.
Counsel Blaylock?
Yes.
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCackren?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay, item number two. I would make a motion to move to refer to Park and Traffic Safety Committee for a report back at the October 24th, 22 city council meeting on the potential removal of the taxi-only parking spots downtown. If I can get a second, I'll discuss that. Thank you, Counsel Bagley. At this point, from my understanding, we only have one registered taxi service in the city. We have at least a minimum of, I think, three spots downtown, potentially four. I would look to look at, have the Park and Traffic and Safety look to reduce that to just one spot, maybe within some correspondence with the one medallion that we have in the city to see what is preferred for that vendor. We're always looking to add more parking supply.
And that's been moved and seconded?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Assistant Mayor. I think that is a great request and look forward to supporting that, at least having the conversation on that and understanding, you know, how many medallions out there, how many parking spots, and very much support that. Counsel Bagley?
I think this is a great idea because it puts potentially much-needed inventory back into the city's hands. The October 24th report back, is that? Give the city staff enough time after our, I think it's October 6th is our next PTS meeting.
That's a good question, if I can think about that on the fly. It may be that we are not ready to make a full recommendation in time to make the October 24th meeting, but we'll provide that report through the PTS Chairman Bagley if we're not ready at the October 24th meeting to make a recommendation. We'll come at the following meeting.
Okay. I accept that.
All right, a roll call vote.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Taber?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counsel Lombardi?
Yes.
Counsel Blaylock?
Yes.
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCackren?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. And, Your Honor, the final thing on my, on the agenda for my name, I would make a motion for a request for a report back from the Recreational and Department of Public Works in creating a disc golf course at Community Campus. Now, if I get a second, I can.
Second?
Thank you. We're always looking for, as Counselor Bagley says, low-cost, high-impact. Disc golf is one of the trending sports in the country with a growth of over 150 new courses so far in 2023, based on the data from the UDisc, udisc.com, which is a national organization. So this was actually brought to me because I have some residents, some friends that are residents in the city who are avid disc golf fanatics, and they often have to travel to Hampton or Dover or other communities. When we were thinking about Community Campus and what we can do there, we know that there's a, there's a decent amount of land that is not buildable per se, but we do have walking trails and we do have other things. So I thought it would be a great project to potentially fill up some of that space. So I look forward to working with the Rec Department, Counselor Blaylock, and the Department of Public Works to see if we can build that here. In your packet, you will see that there's a very detailed outline of what we look to believe that initial setup cost, just from materials, and that was pulled from the national organization, and it's about $25,000, minimal need for upkeep. Everyone brings their own supplies. The big thing too for me is that it's an affordable activity and sport for everyone. There's no age limit on this, and really, it's, all you really need is a frisbee. And so it's a really fun sport that I would recommend. It's trending upwards like pickleball, so I think we're gonna, we're gonna hit it on the high loop.
Thank you, Assistant Mayor. Any comments or questions? Counselor Taber?
Thanks, Your Honor. I asked the city manager for the total acreage out of the Community Campus. It's an interesting parcel of land. It's 36 acres. There are three parcels that are developable, comprising 24 acres in total. So I think my concern would be, as we proceed cautiously, if we ever want to get affordable housing out there, which I think is an opportunity, might we be smart to keep that in mind and work just with the 12 acres that are either wetland or not developable? And will that be enough? You know, we saw figures in the, in the packet that you need 18 acres. So I think we'll need to balance those carefully, because we want to, we want to look at the long-term interests of the community in that, in that property. And if we could house 100 or 200 or 250 people who couldn't otherwise afford to live here, that, that might have a great long-term benefit, too. So we've got to balance. And, you know, maybe if we have to use some of the developable land, this could be done on one-year leases or two-year leases or something like that.
Counsel Moreau?
Beyond Community Campus, I actually think we probably have some places that we could possibly do this, because we do have a lot of sort of unusable trails and wetland areas that, I mean, it could even be in some of the land that's along the rail trail, it could be, you know, I, I think that we have more options than Community Campus, so I would not want to stifle us to think of just that one spot. Let's think of all the areas of the city that might be able to accommodate such a thing.
I think we can accomplish that even within the motion as presented.
Mayor, Counselor Cook has her hand up.
Counselor Cook, just because I'll forget.
Thank you, Mayor. I was actually going to echo exactly what Counselor Moreau said. I think it's, it's a wonderful idea to bring disc golf to Portsmouth, but that said, I want to make sure that we find the most appropriate place for it, and so I don't want to exclude other locations in town if we think that they're more appropriate. So I just want to make sure, I'm not a recreation expert, so I can't tell you the perfect location in Portsmouth to locate this kind of activity. So I think it's important that we turn to Department of Public Works, the Rec Department, to be thinking about what would be the most appropriate location.
Thank you, Counsel Cook. Counsel Blaylock and Counsel Bagley.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I want to thank Assistant Mayor Kelly for bringing this forward. It's very exciting. I, when we were knocking on doors campaigning a year ago, I remember several residents bringing up disc golf as a great outdoor recreational, it's something that Portsmouth doesn't have. When I actually lived out in Lake Tahoe, I had the pleasure of developing a disc golf course in the Incline, the, sorry, the Incline Village General Improvement District, and we were able to get local sponsors, and it was, this kind of course can be put in any amoeba, amoeba-shaped, it can, you know, you can make it any shape, so it really can be flexible and go in some sort of land that can't be used otherwise. But I think it added a lot to the community out there, and I think this would add a lot to the community in Portsmouth, too. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Boa. Counsel Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to thank the Assistant Mayor and Portsmouth resident Andrew Packlett, who they laid out in the packet the how, the what, and the why of, you know, as a citizen, if you want the city to do something for you, I would encourage you to look into the packet and how they proposed it and why they justified it, how they showed all the costs, and they showed the links, and how this could be a, you know, a high-impact, low-cost solution for our city. So if anybody else out there has these types of ideas, this is a great template to, to bring them forth with.
Thank you, Counsel Bagley. Good time now to, this, I don't think rises to that level if I remember correctly, but the CIP submissions are due September 30th, and I will echo Counselor Bagley's point. You know, we are, we are at our best when we are taking your ideas and, and making them happen. And it's, it's great to see well-thought ideas come in and help us move the ball forward. So I would love to thank the Assistant Mayor. I think that I do appreciate Counselor Taber's concern about affordable housing. Land is always at a premium, but I would steal Peter Rice's phrase that, you know, this isn't a huge stranded cost, even if we do have to move this. From what I've looked at, it doesn't seem as though we're going to, you know, the capital investment is, is not there. And I think development can take a long time to happen, and this is a, an appropriate use of that, and building community is, you know, it's my favorite thing to be able to do, to see us come together in new ways as a city and invite more people to enjoy it. So thank you very much. And when the paper called me, I said, if this gets built, my first match is going to be against the Assistant Mayor. I've, at camp when I was fifth grade, I played at disc golf. I'm undefeated, 1-0, but I'm going to put my 30-year record on the line if we are able to get this off the ground. So thank you very much, Assistant Mayor.
You ready for the roll call?
Oh, yeah, roll call. You're ready, right?
I'm ready.
Absolutely. All right, roll call vote, please.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Taber?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counsel Bagley?
Yes.
Counsel Lombardi?
Yes.
Counsel Blaylock?
Yes.
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCackren?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Counsel Denton?
Thank you, Your Honor. Portsmouth's third annual electric vehicle show is going to be on Sunday, October 2nd. It's being presented by Clean Energy New Hampshire, and it's the last day of the National Drive Electric Week. The, it'll be from 10:00 in the morning to 1:00 in the afternoon at the Bridge Street Lot. We're still looking for several specific electric vehicles. Instead of just having random ones show up, there's 14 ones which we are seeking to have there to showcase. And the Bridge Lee, Bridge Street parking lot was picked to showcase the fact that the city has included in the CIP three-quarters of a million dollars to go towards electric[1720.58] city has included in the CIP 3/4 of a million dollars to go towards electric vehicle chargers with the wiring already being installed when the pavement was done in that parking lot, to have some installed there. So anyone who's able to make it on October 2, it'll be great to have you come out.
Thank you, Counselor Denton.
Mr. Mayor, I'd love to add some exciting news to Counselor Denton's item. Through some remaining encumbered funds in our parking department, we are able to program or allocate $27,000 we will purchase, we will, we have purchased, they are taking eight to 12 weeks to come in, but two charging stations which can charge up to four cars at one time. So eight to 12 weeks-ish from now, we will see those in Bridge Street Lot.
That's awesome.
Thank you, City Manager. I have something to announce there. Next up, Counselor Bagley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Parking, Traffic and Safety Committee Action Sheet, end minutes of September 1, 2022. I believe they were in your packet, and I'm going to move to accept and approve the action sheet, end minutes of September 1, 2022, Parking and Traffic Safety Committee meeting.
Second?
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Taber?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCackren?
Yes.
Unanimous.
And I have a second action item needing approval by the city council, and that is Portwalk Place, request for renewal of valet license agreements by business owner, and I move to approve renewal of valet license agreement for Parade Residence Hotel LLC for a term of one year, and to approve renewal of valet license agreement for Portsmouth High LLC for a term of one year.
Second?
Any questions? Not all in favor, but a roll call vote when Kelly is ready.
Just going to switch pages. Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Taber?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCackren?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Next up is Counselor Lombardi.
Create a Blue Ribbon Committee to study the establishment of a public-private partnership to properly archive historic documents relating to the history of the city of Portsmouth. There's a, there's a detail later on in the packet, but if I can get a second, I would like to discuss it a bit.
Second?
Thank you. Basically, the history of Portsmouth is so fundamental to the, to what I would call the ethos of Portsmouth. It's, it is recognized important to the country, to the city, to the state, and it's just an integral part of the city's identity. But we found, I know, in talking with the city staff, that there's a problem with archiving documents, and it is for the city, and I know for a fact that the, some of the historical organizations in Portsmouth also have that same problem. So that's why I'm proposing a public-private partnership, and we would look at a lot of the details within that, but how it works and stuff like that, that's listed there. Kind of what I call the hard pieces are listed in the document that I supplied. The, the soft things are perhaps the harder decisions that have to be made, which are, talk about ownership and access and facilitating research in a facility like that. There's also the aspect of the legal identity of a public-private partnership, which I have no idea how that works, and I'm a little sorry Bob's leaving, but I think Susan might be a big help in that. So anyway, that's the rationale, and that's the idea, and so I hope we can move forward with a committee that can figure this out and bring a report back to the city.
Thank you, Counselor Lombardi. Are there any questions of Counselor Lombardi or generally, Counselor Moreau?
I'd just like to thank Counselor Lombardi. I think this is a great idea, there's a lot of history, and as the Portsmouth 400 is coming up next year, I know a lot of different people are looking at different things, so this is probably a really good time to try to capture a lot of that. I'd like to encourage the committee to look at the access to the general public and how we can make it as electronic as possible. I think those would be some really key things for the future as far as keeping stuff together, so, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Moreau, Counselor Taber?
Yes, poodles to Counselor Lombardi. I know that he's reached out to the Athenaeum, and the library, and numerous other organizations, so this has been really well thought out, and I, I also think it's a great opportunity because there's the Athenaeum, and our own library, and even organizations like the churches have, have all of these documents, they're overflowing with them, literally, and they're being stuck up on shelves, and there's a need for long-term storage. That's the near-term problem, but the opportunity, as Counselor Moreau says, is to have this material accessible to the public. And, you know, to have documents that are the history of the city, accessible to the public, and accessible to people who want to write history, I think could really benefit all of us.
Thank you, Counselor Taber.
Counselor Cook has her hand up.
Counselor Bagley, and then we'll go to Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to commend Counselor Lombardi for bringing this forward. I'm a proprietor at the Athenaeum, and this is, Portsmouth is very lucky to have an institution like the Athenaeum. There used to be about 400 of them in the country. There's only a few remaining, and they're mostly in big cities like Boston, New York, and Philadelphia. So we have an amazing institution, and we're struggling with what to do with all the stuff that we have in storage to make sure that it's accessible. We do a good job with what we have now, but we had a study done, and people are of a generation who kept diaries and particularly filmed from photographs are passing on, and their, their hairs have, you know, these big boxes of historical documents, and they want to donate them to a repository, and we don't have the space for it at the Athenaeum, we don't have the space for it at the, here in the city, we don't have the space for it at the library. It would be a shame to lose all of these documents that are about to be forthcoming over the next 10 to 20 years, because we don't have the space to store it. Also would be a shame for the Athenaeum to do it independently, Strawberry Bank to do it independently, the library to do it independently, the city to do it independently, since we're all trying to achieve the same goal. So we could save a lot of money and do a much better job if we, we develop this public-private partnership.
Thank you, Counselor Bagley. Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Lombardi, for bringing this forward, and also thank you for shepherding this discussion through the Governance Committee. You know, I'm fortunate to sit on Governance and have already witnessed some of the discussion from our, our library director and others within the city about these concerns around archives, and so I really thank you for taking such an effort to make sure that we get this right, that we establish a Blue Ribbon Committee, that they can really think about this more broadly and how we address this concern. So thank you so much, Counselor Lombardi. I have a question for the city attorney, I just want to make sure, I want to clarify, I'm a member of several of these organizations, specifically, you know, the Athenaeum and the DAR, and I want to make sure that it's okay to vote on this tonight, given that I'm a member, since there are no financial implications yet associated with this.
Your Honor, I have two recommendations. Number one, I think it's entirely appropriate that you discuss any, any relationship that you might have with anyone involved in the city vote. I think that Code of Ethics calls for something of that nature, but the second thing I have to say is that unless voting on this matter would put money into your pocket or take money out of your pocket, you do not have a conflict of interest, and you could vote on the matter.
Thank you, Attorney Sullivan.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this tonight? Counselor Lombardi, thank you. A long time ago, I was a, I was a history major, and it's amazing what you find when you get past the headlines and into a primary source, and you understand somebody in a similar situation to yourself, how they, on a first-person basis, made it through a time. It gives you an awesome clarity, and, and those are probably some of the documents that we can't keep at the Athenaeum. I will say that on the council, and now as mayor, I've been incredibly lucky to have Stephanie Seacourt provide me with documents that have to deal with our history of Portsmouth. One of those was the 300th anniversary pamphlet that I found, where we, we found our, our names, or our motto of the city of the open door. And to be able to read through those things and have them describe Portsmouth as a city on the rise, constantly changing, it's, it's a reminder that things do change, but they stay the same, and I think the, the more that we can understand our, our shared past, we'll have a better opportunity to have a shared future. So thank you, Counselor Lombardi. I look forward to appointing this committee, and I would ask anybody that is interested to please reach out to any member of the council or the city clerk, including myself, to, to put your name forward for this, and look to have recommendations, either the next council or the council meeting following that. So with that, roll call vote.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Taber?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCackren?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Your Honor, I know we're getting close, but would it be possible to have a five-minute biological break?
We just have approval of, of grants and donations. Can we, can we get through, can we get through approval of grants and donations? Informational items?
Yes.
All right.
I guess I'll just put it out there that if we get through a picker...
But thanks off here, guys. We got, next up, I wait a motion to accept the grant in the amount of $275,000 as presented.
Second.
A roll call vote for this approval of Critical Flood Infrastructure Grant from New Hampshire DES.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Taber?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCackren?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Mayor, I will go really quickly to remind the public, as the mayor did earlier, that the deadline for folks to submit submissions for our upcoming capital improvement plan is September 30. The online form has, form has been updated to be even easier to use than in previous years. To date, we have 41 submissions, so that's great, and that's higher than most years. The other thing I want to bring to the public's attention is the long-awaited, much-anticipated use of a credit and debit card system at the recycling center. That took a while, but now you can do that, and there is a credit card service charge, but you can use your credit. Those are the, those are the updates. I'm happy to give a very short McIntyre update, if that would be okay with the council. The, the rest of the report back seemed to be pretty self-explanatory, but a quick verbal McIntyre update is that we are on track, we continue to track on schedule with the timeline initiated back in March of this year. We expect to achieve 50% design by mid-October. This week, we anticipate drafts from outside council relative to the development agreement and the ground lease, from which we will continue to work on the pro forma and understanding the financial contribution for, for both sides, but all is tracking well in that regard.
Thank you, City Manager. Just a note on the outdoor pool, I've reached out to the chairs of the Conservation Commission. I think that, you know, this report back spells out pretty clearly the, the financial obligations that we have, the federal obligations in terms of not moving the pool, but I, you know, I want to address the concerns, I think it was specifically Counselor Denton around, you know, chlorine. The projections do not have this pool sitting underwater, but storm surges, being what they are, moving away from the bathtub model to the storm surge model. We'll continue to have a conversation, but want to preserve the outdoor pool as, as best we can. And then, you know, just a note on the legal department's public forum area, you know, there's, we're all in New Hampshire, we all believe very strongly in the freedom of speech, the freedom of assembly. The clarification was not having to do with any singular group coming, but a singular group coming for as long as it did caused people naturally to have the question of, are there any rules here at all to any of this? And Attorney Sullivan clarified, there are rules to this, and longstanding rules. So it's not a discussion of whether or not we support freedom of speech, or don't, we do. That's why we're all here, that's why we have public comment, that's why we have the ability to assemble. So I just, people came and understand that, but there's, there's not any effort to reduce or eliminate public speech or, or public assembly. So just wanted to point that out, and thank you, Counselor Bagley, for pulling up the unexpended bond procedures. So with that, oh...
One thing, Your Honor, under miscellaneous, I would just like to remind the city and thank a couple people on this podium. On Saturday, Big Brothers Big Sisters, we have a group, the Young Florentipus, from mentoring, we host the Stiletto Sprint every year downtown, we have a team from the police department, I believe from the fire department, and we have a, you didn't...
Did I sign those?
Oh, yes, you did.
Yeah, that's right.
We have four counselors on this podium that have signed up for that, and a couple counselors have run before, so if you are downtown...
Saturday.
Saturday, please stop by, and it's, it's always a fun spectacle, spectacle to see everyone do a, a little dash in heels.
Counselor Taber?
As long as we're talking about pools, the indoor pool has been closed with an indefinite reopen date, I wonder if there's any update on that.
I do have an update, a quick one, that we typically close and renovate the pool at this time every year. DPW has been cleaning and filling the pool and hot tub this week. The floor coating will go down next week. The pool is slated to open back up on Wednesday, October 5, and not only have the deck drains been replaced, a new floor coating put down, but there's been painting, grouting, new signs, all indoor signage has been redone, and small fixes to the locker room, there will, there are seemingly a big difference that you will all see.
Thank you, City Manager. Making a great pool, even...
Your Honor, I have a quick parliamentary inquiry for the city attorney, being his last meeting. Where would you like to go after this?
We know where he wants to go.
Your Honor, I motion to adjourn.
We just have a citywide...
Citywide neighborhood.
Neighborhood committee, August 17, that was already, do we have a report back on that?
Yes, well, the minutes were in there.
Yeah, the minutes, nothing else, okay.
No.
All right.
I was amazed, it was like an 11-minute meeting, so the minutes were really short and sweet.
Thank you, Bob.
Bob, thank you.
Since we have Stephanie Seacourt here and Counselor Bagley, if we could just take one picture with you up here before we just immortalize the, the last evening, I'd appreciate that.
Of course.
And Your Honor, when we do take a council photo, we will have both city attorneys in the front.
Oh, great.
Right, are we adjourned?
Do we move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Do we need a roll call vote on that? Bob?
No, Your Honor, you can just declare the adjournment.
It's over.
Declare it.